Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Eggly.
Here.
Morton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
And Bailey's Abbotson.
Yep. Cory's not here tonight, so, all right, thank you. We have Justin, you're up, Justin.
Hey, first off, huh?
Yep.
How's it going, guys? Is this, or is this here? Good, good. So, I'm back to talk about housing on the property, the Dupree property out there, buying Casa Grande Gentryneck truck. I came in here six months or so ago, spoke with you guys about what we do together to try to get housing to go to that parcel. I hired Joe Herr and Dean, who's the engineer, to do the drawing. I think it's on the back. He did a layout there, and that's the entrance of Casa Grande, and I don't like the entrance of Casa Grande, and there's a lift station. As you can see, there's a little green dot from the back is a lift station. Basically, not being able to sleep and staring at the Fines County auditors, I realized that there is a lift station and the Yoder's Body Shop, the car wash, property, which is, you know, only two properties down, basically, from Casa Grande. And I just thought it was foolish to put in another maintenance lift station at $400,000. So, my plan, and going back to the drawing board, is how do we get to the lift station that's by Yoder's Body Shop and use it? So, as some of you know, I've talked to many of you, I talk to Mike almost every two weeks. I try to give him updates of what's going on. I understand some of you probably thought that I haven't been doing anything, and where have I been? But I have been working on it nonstop, and I, Mike, how many times I talk to you, Bart?
Yeah, you call me quite often.
All right, so, just want everybody to know that I am working behind the scenes. So, as we all know, that we have a problem in our town with the hospital leaving, and so, Dr. Reddy has Mark Haber's property under contract, so I've just been kind of flying around like a kite, waiting to see what happens with that to come up, if he'll put it back up for sale or release the contract on it. As I show you guys, I think that the multi-trailer court is a lot better entrance for, to do a subdivision and do it correctly in Hicksville. And I think to do a subdivision in small town is, first of all, very tough and risky, so I think you have to do it 100% correctly, and I think to do it correctly is you buy the multi-trailer court lot, and you put the entrance there, and you run the utility easement along George Noldy's property and the back of Haber's, and you tie it directly into the lift station across the street. I think that makes the most sense for development in Hicksville. The Ohio gas is an issue. Ohio gas, last meeting I spoke to you guys, I presented you a letter from them that said they could supply 40 homes. The 40 home for the gas is on FWT's side. So, I've had people say, well, why don't you start from Spencerville Street? The problem is on Spencerville Street is we don't have any gas, so you have to work your way through. I'm basically back, as you guys can see on the second page, I have a contract from D.R. Horton, and all I have to do is sign it, and it shows you the prices, and it shows you the closing, and it's everything. It's just waiting for me to sign saying that they'll build 20 homes right out of the gate. I haven't signed it because I can't do this project by myself. You financially lose money doing it, and that's why I came and talked to you guys about putting in money to help build the infrastructure. And as I spoke before, I think this is the only hope of housing for Hicksville to happen, is this one. If the city, I've heard rumors of some other acquisitions you guys are looking at, some other big properties, so if there is no funds available for housing, then I'm going to walk away from this project. But I need to know, I need to, you know, the meter keeps spinning. I know, I've heard some people say, bring a plan. The problem with the plan is the plan can change at any time, because I could go to Chicago Avenue, and I could buy a property, and I could put a drive off of Chicago Avenue, and then I was talking to, actually Jim Schmidt, to see about running a utility easement of his property to get to the lift station. I don't think it's the correct way, but I think there's a scenario to do that. I don't think it's the best thing for Hicksville. But the problem with having a plan is the plan changes. I could walk out of this meeting and my phone could ring, and I could buy this property. It's for sale now. If what happens, the rumor I've heard of you guys of our hospital happens, then I'm going to assume the contract's going to be let off that property, and first phone call is going to be me. Hey, you ready to buy it? Well, I'm not interested in buying it unless we have a plan. So, that's why I'm here. I'm here to give you guys an update. Are you guys interested in housing? I think you're going to say, well, what would we get? I think at the end of the day, you get 40 lots. You get 40 billable lots, you get 20 homes started right out of the gate. I myself would be interested in putting up some spec houses, too, so you'd actually get more than 20. But I guess at the end of the day, is housing important in Hicksville?
I know we spoke on the phone, and I know Ohio gas doesn't have the capacity for anything, 40 houses or less. You talk about, you know, people out in the country being on propane, and I see this is shown 114 single-family lots. So, your vision is a lot of the houses that be built back there would be on propane, not on natural gas?
My vision is, none of us know how long it'll take to sell 40 lots in Hicksville. Because if these guys build 20 out of the gate, sell them 20 lots, I want to think would take a long time, but then look at the housing development in Edgerton. I mean, how long is it taking them? I don't know if you guys pay attention, 180 per unit put in. I mean, it's hard to sell lots. So, we don't have crystal ball how fast the lots are going to go. If it does go gangbusters, I think you put the houses on propane after you hit the 40 cap, and then you would have your water, you'd have your infrastructure. Hopefully someday, FWT would make a expansion, and I heard may happen, may not happen, but I heard if a factory does an expansion to create jobs, and they get funds to help upsize infrastructure, which is Ohio gas, FWT would need an upsize to get gas, and then you can get money from the state of Ohio. So, if the state of Ohio puts funds in to upsize the gas for FWT, it would be in the front of the ditch, so that would upsize the pipe for the 40. You understand what I'm saying? So, sometime those homes maybe would have the opportunity to have natural gas. But I don't think you would shut down, if people are building homes, that you would shut it down because they don't have gas. I live on propane. I don't even know, if somebody comes and fills it up. I'm sure there's people in this room that have propane tanks out in the country, and it's, in my opinion, it's not the end of the world.
And I also, just so it's on record, so that the Ohio gas, anything that they would supply, you had talked to them in the past, and you said that that would be free, they covered all the costs?
They covered the cost. Then, he looked it up, and they run a certain distance, just like the electric. They will give each house a certain distance to run to get to it, and if it goes over that distance, then you have to pay, and if it doesn't go over that distance, then they cover the cost. And that's how ADP is. So, they both fall in that parameters. They would pay to run the gas, and they would pay to, talked to Mike Greenall with ADP, and they would do the same thing. The thing that we need as a community is we would have to put in the road. I would want to put in curb and gutter, which is the rolled curb, so it looks nice, like we have to put in this gas line, or the sewer line, and the sanitary line, and all the storm sewer, which is expensive. My past development, I think it comes out to about $70,000 a lot, to develop a lot. So, that's the cost, buying material Midwest over in Woodburn. It doesn't matter if you put it in Fort Wayne, Indiana, or you put it in Hicksville. The material cost is a material cost. The earthwork's the earthwork cost. So, in my opinion, you can only probably sell a lot in Hicksville for about $50,000. I don't think you'll get much more than that. So, the reason we don't have developers beating down this door is when I just said, you lose $20,000 putting in a lot. But I've started, and you guys all know I'm about to go off course years ago in 2017. I heard we're going to look into housing, we're going to get a housing committee. At the end of the day, it takes money to do. And I'm willing to put money in. This isn't something somebody's going to get rich over by any means, but it's a way to start housing in Hicksville. And if we want to keep businesses open, and hospitals open, then we need to have presidents, you know, people, you know? I would say you guys have more of a reward with housing in this town than I do. You guys get the taxes, you guys get the water bills, you guys get the sewer bills, and you get a growing community. I don't get a water bill, I don't get a sewer bill. I have contact on a piece of property I think is the only hope for development in Hicksville. And if it sells, I don't know where else you're going to put a housing development. At the end of the day, my back to the question is, are you guys financially, what we spoke of before, interested in putting money in to bring housing in?
I'm sure we'd all like to see housing. I want to say, we're going to probably go into executive session on some, some land acquisitions slash selling a property, too, so I don't want to...
Right. I'll just say, you're absolutely right, 100%. We do need housing. But, you know, something else on our docket tonight is the change in, you know, we've got to deal with a possible structure of property tax change in Ohio. That is huge.
Okay, that's fine. Last thing I want to do is keep digging and spending money, and then if you guys walk away from me, believe me, I'll sleep fine tonight. I'll sell the farm, and Hicksville's not going to get any housing, and we're all fine. Everything we tried, it's done. Hicksville's not growing. But at the end of the day, I'm not going to keep spending money if you guys aren't in. So, if you're not in, I'm friends, I'm fine, I move on, I continue to vote, and leave. It's fine.
This kind of, this happened within the last two weeks, so, I don't know if you know anything about the Ohio tax structure with Indiana at a state level, but...
I heard it happen, they got like 30% cut over in Leo, it's probably something similar.
I don't know about Indiana, but I know on Cheryl's docket kind of thing, what she's been working with is if it does pass, it's a definite structure change for schools, county, villages, cities.
So, the taxes are going down?
There's a petition circulating to put an amendment on the ballot that would abolish property taxes in the state of Ohio.
Holy cow. I'd cheer for that.
Which is our general fund money, which we could lose about $180,000 a year.
I see, I see. So, we have to figure out how to make it. Figure out how to make it up, house, water bill, or sewer bill.
I'm just saying, it's actually having on our ordinances tonight to look at other ways to do it.
If also, if anybody wants to know who the guy is that came in with the name, Dave there, he was the owner of Northeast Street Girls, but this one, the biggest development firm in Fort Wayne, they put in up to 25,000 lots, he did developments in the Carolinas, in Texas, all over the country. He's my mentor. I don't do anything without talking to that guy. He's been like that for the last 10 years, probably, Dave, a long time? A lot, a lot. So, not that he's here for any collateral, but if you're wondering who he is, he's everything, I'm going to leave everything I'll do here. He looks at and runs the numbers and sees all things, hopes of layout. So, that's who he is.
When I, you know, looking at all these scenarios, and like I said, you've been putting some time and invested in this to a certain level, but you don't see any other way of moving forward with a housing project without any help from outside?
I mean, anybody that's going to lose 20 grand a lot, right? So, what person is going to work to lose 800 grand? You put in 40 lots, you just lost 800 grand. That's quite a amount of income, and that's why the Fort Wayne people are coming. We can't get enough price for the lots in Hicksville. But somehow, we have to get the ball rolling, hopefully, someday, yes.
I agree.
And as you guys know better than anybody, the cost of this infrastructure stuff just keeps going up and up and up and up. So, I know it's, I know none of us have a money tree. I mean, you guys don't have a money tree, I understand that, and you have to do what you get with the best for the funds that you, the guys are allocated to take over. But it just keeps going up, and it's going to be harder, longer. I'm not here to cry to you, I'm just trying to say, do we want to try to do it or not? If we don't, I need to quit spending money on it, because believe it or not, I do spend money on this stuff. So, I guess, this is my update. You guys can go into executive session, talk about...
Yeah, I think we would be more apt to give you some type of an answer after this meeting.
But that's fine. I respect, I respect that. I understand that there's big things happening behind the scenes in Hicksville that probably most people don't know about. I get that. I just, I need to really shut this off or continue to go. So, that's why I'm, so, that's it. Any questions? You guys know I love to talk. Ron, I've called you multiple times, you don't answer your phone anymore.
As you drove by, you may have noticed it, there's always somebody in my ear when you're trying to call.
I got to say this. I drive, I'm calling Ron, and I turn to the mailbox, I call, I'm looking around Beverly, standing out here. He looks at my phone call and declines it and sticks it in the pocket.
He waits, though.
Yeah, he did, yeah.
I've done that, too, but you don't get to see me dip up my phone.
You really tipped off, but you did. So, anyway, that's it. Just let me know.
We want discussion with council. Thank you. We got approval of Bill's list in the packet here. Questions on that?
Yeah, I got to wait. Just so it's out there, the 150th celebration money, and that was all donations, and I meant not to cover all the costs of everything.
Absolutely. Cheryl was kind enough to handle the money for us, and get the donations in and then redirect it to the proper pay, payants.
Ross Suze, BFD repair, American service of $11,503. What is that?
Terrible frequency drives, BFD. That's what controls the speed of a motor. And of course, now here, it rams up and down your speed.
Right. I'm sure that's, that's one of the big pumps in the first building, and I thought all those had been replaced.
Now, this could be the, not the pump, this could be the controller. Because when we have multiple BFDs at school, and when we replace them, they're $7,000 to $10,000 each.
How about National Oil and Gas, 220 oil for $2,300. What's 220 oil?
No, I'm just focusing on the invoice, I don't know what I read.
And park items from Napa for $1,109.
It was more than, it was like five departments, but it doesn't print everything on here.
Okay, I'm all done. I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beverly.
Yeah. All eight of them are going in.
Bassett.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Eggly.
Yes.
Did we miss the minutes? Minutes?
What's that? Oh, the minutes, I didn't do the minutes there. Bye, Paul. Back to the minutes after the bills list.
One correction. On the personnel committee part, where it says council wastes millions of dollars, it was thousands of dollars. By the way, I wish to approve the minutes with that amendment. Second.
Roll call.
Where is that?
Personnel, first page, about three quarters way down.
No, I'm talking about the council meeting minutes. That's what we're approving. Isn't that in the meeting, minutes reading?
No.
No.
Okay.
Right above the box.
Okay. All right, I'll make that change. Give us a second.
I'll do it.
Roll call.
Eggly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sorry about that. Boards and commissions, they have no meetings, I believe. Council Committee reports.
I think you guys have the notes in your packet. The only one other thing I wanted to add to that show confirmed tonight, the cost of the lawyer would be between $6,000 and $8,000 in total.
The committee's report. Administrator report, Cory had put a report in our packet. I know Jared's here tonight. If anything was zoning, I think he can answer, right? You're not, you're not going to be Cory? No. All right, solicitors' report.
We have final reading of ordinance 2025-10 by Captain Oldie, and then these sections 505.13 of the Hicksville classified ordinances pertaining to keeping animals in your dwellings. Well, I know we had a couple of questions about, Jared, you said you'd come in...
I have your, I wrote my notes on your email, so...
Oh, I didn't even see it. Come back through?
No, I didn't send it back through.
Oh.
I wrote them on my notes, so if we want to...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Turn it over tonight, that's...
Oh, sorry, I thought you missed it.
That's kind of why.
Um, I was curious, why six? What, how did we come up with the number six?
That seemed to be, I tried to go back and find... Can you come up into the microphone, I can hear you better. The, that seemed to be a consistent number, like Defiance has a limit of four on theirs. A lot of them have six, eight, 10, nothing much above 10 that I could find. I tried to go back and find. I have, Defiance is printed out here. They have, it's kind of the same structures as what I proposed in this new one, but theirs is four. Six was, I hate to say it this way, but pulled out a, just a kind of a number to keep...
Kind of an average.
And I think that once you start getting into those higher numbers, it becomes a nuisance problem, you know, a smell problem, or something that made, you know, some people get into this type of thing, and they go, oh, God, I didn't realize it was that much work, you know?
Do you get a lot of complaints for smells and...?
I've only had one written complaint, and it wasn't, and I, that was a place that I thought was under control, while in a very short amount of time, she acquired almost triple the amount of birds in the same pen, and that's when it became a problem. So, that kind of piggybacks on the limiting the number type of thing. There's a couple places that I've had verbal complaints, comments. I have, there's just one or two that I know that I personally can smell as I drive by. So, aside from verbal complaints, no, nothing. But everybody thinks that it's, you know, it's okay, and it's just something we have to deal with, and it's not. And I think just extending this a little further, maybe a little more black and white would go a long way, you know? We shouldn't have to deal with things like that, you know, neighbors or passersby or anybody for help, safety, and just plain nuisance. You know, the wind blows right on a farm, and it's not pleasant, not pleasant at all.
You can expect that if you live in the country, but not in town.
Right. If I live next to the chicken farm, or one of Cleveland's dairy farms, or, you know, I would expect that, but not sitting in Westwood, you know?
Yeah.
Something like that. And there's a lot of them, like, and you had, you'd expressed the same thing. You said, I did not realize, and I find them, eh, about every couple of weeks, somebody will say, well, so-and-so's got them. If they keep them under control, it's not an issue, right? But if you can hear them, or they're just like, you can see them. This, the one, the one that I got the verbal complaint about, we, I gave her 30 days to, because she didn't, she didn't get the 100 feet. She didn't, wasn't able to get the 100 feet from neighboring structures. It's in the current, so she's in the process of getting rid of her whole pen, and so that won't be an issue. And that's, that's another thing, is 100 feet, yes, it's doable, but it's not, there's not many properties that you can do that on, you know, mostly on the west side of town. Or the west side of town is about the only place you can achieve that unless you have a double lot, or a lot of these places, it's just, it's just not feasible for them to stay away from every neighboring structure. So, this won't be as big of an issue, I don't think. Some, but unfortunately, some folks who should be shut down already will be, this will, you know, this will ramp up, and it'll just be eliminated, you know, you'll have to eliminate it. The six won't even apply.
Yeah.
So, but like you said, I would, you find them all the time.
Yeah.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
You or Rachel, one of, it says that you can maintain more than six approved animals in total, excluding cats and dogs. I was always under the assumption, and I could be wrong because I'm old, but you can only have so many dogs, like five or something, and then, then you have to have a kennel's license.
You're saying that's an Ohio law? I believe that's an Ohio law. I'm not sure. I mean, I can look it up, but I don't know.
And that would, once, and once you have to have a kennel's license, then you become commercial, and you have to change the zoning around your house, or up your house. I don't know what in the world anybody would need six dogs for, living beside me, or you, or move in Derek's backyard.
There's already a kennel license, there is a kennel license, so I don't think it would really have to do with what you guys are trying to do here, because that's a separate LRC code that falls under dog licensing, so...
But wouldn't that eliminate the amount that somebody could have at their house? Is there a limit on the kennel license itself?
I think it's whatever the number is, you just have to have the kennel license. I don't think there's an absolute statute that says you can only have kennel dogs. I was thinking it was anything over five...
Yeah.
...that results in having a kennel license. But I don't believe there's anything that says you, they'll set a number that you can or can't have, so...
But after that set number in the state statute, it says you then must acquire...
Yeah, they have a kennel license, and that would be the dog warden's issue to cite, or we could actually cite for the dog licensing. Usually, we let the dog wardens, anything that has to do with licensing, we call the dog warden, and they usually come up and cite the people for their dog licensing.
Do you know, I don't know this at all. Do you know if it includes cats?
No, because there is no cat law.
Ron, the internet says that in Ohio, there is no statewide limit on the number of dogs an individual can own without needing a kennel license. They say that that can however change depending on local legislation.
Well, I think we need to put a limit on this, unlimited dogs and cats is, wow, we can't have that.
So, people want...
Yeah, especially if you get some coon dogs out there, entertaining you in the middle of the night.
I would think that would be separately. I mean, that would be my opinion, separately from, you know...
A domestic ordinance.
Right. I mean, if we, if, I don't disagree with the idea, I just, I don't think it would be, that was trying to capture, you can have six animals, or six ducks, or five ducks in one.
Right, but we also include the verbiage that if you can have as many dogs and cats as you want. It's in there.
It just says we exclude that from the number.
And if you exclude something, that means you don't have to abide by it, and you can have as many as you want. Don't do the Clinton verbiage on me.
I've had nine before. I just had to buy nine licenses. I lived in the country, but I had nine, and you don't have to have a kennel if you have nine, if you're not selling them in the freezer, which I was. They were all...
Okay, you're all against me, so let's move on.
I think I just had one last question. Do you know how many people this will currently affect, and how are we going to let them know? I don't want these people to find out January 1st, you've got to get rid of all of your chickens today. I don't think they're a good, and we don't have, without a local...
Grandfather rule or anything.
Right, well, without a local newspaper, we really don't have a great way to tell people, like, hey, you got to, you have now until January.
I mean, we could, we could... We could, we could do, we could put it in the paper, if, if, we, but it was West Bend, right?
Right.
Or the ones that, the ones that we know of. It would, it would be just as, you know, there's less, in, that I know of, there's, there's ten or less. That I know that house.
That would need to.
Putting it in water bill would be a wonderful idea.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people are.
Like I said, he's already knows the ones that kind of are past the limit of, of what we're looking at here, so, and you were going to give them time to, you were gonna, say you have thirty days, you were gonna give them time to find another home form and stuff.
January first, right? But if, I mean, if you don't watch council news, you wouldn't know that. I just want to make sure, we're dealing with live animals, I don't want them to all be evicted January second, might have really good soup that day, the next day, some chicken noodle soup.
I'd eat my chickens in the basement. I'm not, I'm not opposed to Ron's idea and, and maybe back it up even still with a letter, you know, put it in, put it, not everybody needs it, but.
Well, your select, the, the select number that you are already aware of, the ten or so you're aware of, could be a letter and then the rest of it followed up with the bail or the water bill.
Everybody's okay with the number and how it's kind of written with the numbers and?
No.
I think maybe what Ron's talking about, you know, the dog thing would prevent any issues like we have in Hager County.
Uh-huh.
And then last week having the nine huskies that were dropped off inside the village that, uh, we kept at our department for a short time, plus the floor bio that was dumped in Leo, same, and then they found a house in Williams County, it sounds like it was full of huskies, so, uh, I think that's probably maybe what he's getting at, uh, to have some leverage there, or something to deal with, so.
So you have some separate ordinance for that to deal with more domestic animals like that?
Well, you had a, you had a neighbor at one time, maybe you didn't live there at that time, but there was a cat lady out there and they pulled eighty-six cats out of that house, and you could smell that just driving by.
That was before me, but yeah, Mike would talk about that.
Yeah.
So something can address, so.
She did die in that.
Whatever you're going to do with this ordinance that's been changed, written, talked about, motion to pass through or?
I'll make a motion.
At a first? Most likely. Motion stopped.
Would you check on that for me, Rachel?
The, the amount of dogs.
If there's, if there's any, any state statutes that, and I, and I appreciate what Bill did, but find out for sure whether that, that can happen or not.
I'm hearing people looking into it.
Good.
Thank you, Jared.
Thanks.
We have first reading of resolution 2025-11 by caption only declaring necessary to levy an additional tax for current operating expenses and requesting the county auditors to verify the total current valuation of the village and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the new levy and declaring emergency.
Just to clarify on this, so people don't, so in case legislation does not approve us losing that funding, this would be in place, but if, if we're going to lose that funding, then this would go in place to be voted on.
This is the first step.
Yes.
But we have three more.
Three more levies?
Three more readings.
Three more readings, yeah.
Before August sixth.
It says declare an emergency.
All we're doing is asking the auditor to give us the value.
Okay.
Of the town and how much we would get from it with levy that is replacing our inside village that's being taken away, not by the voters, by the legislature.
That's why you're doing it as an emergency?
Right.
No, doing it as an emergency, because after this, you have to have another ordinance, they have to go through three readings to only have two meetings.
Before we get it on the ballot.
To get it on the ballot on time.
Take it to the ball.
So we're going to have a special meeting, is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And the mayor wants to have it on a public meeting. I mean, we're public already, but you invite anyone who wants to talk about it.
Maybe we.
Cause we're trying to get it on the ballot, once we get it on there, then we want them to vote for it, and it's only replacing, we're not asking for more money, just replacement of what the state's taking away.
There's going to be a lot of education around this levy and what it means for us.
Right.
Yeah.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
In a second.
Roll call.
Edlund, yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
So second and final reading of resolution 2025-11 by caption only declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax for current operating expenses, requesting the county auditors to verify the total current valuation of the village and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the new levy and declaring it emergency.
So move.
Roll call.
Everly.
Yep.
Miller.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Edlund.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Um, and then also, I spoke with Mike the other day and today I gave him my letter of resignation. There are some personal things going on in my life right now, I'm not wanting to disclose quite yet, cause it's a little early, so I'm sure you all can kind of insinuate from there, but, um, at this point in my life, it's, you know, family first type of thing and I really appreciate it, you know, everything I got to do so far and the experience, but, um, I'm willing to stay on for a little bit longer to help with the transition and everything like that, but just wanted to say it's a good heads up on everything, um, yeah.
Thank you so much and best of luck.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it, and I thought long and hard about it, this wasn't just a split decision that I made over the weekend, so.
We talked on the phone a little bit, I asked Rachel, since she was able to spend a little bit of time with us while we find another solicitor, if she may be helpful in that process, if, um, you know, because she came from a kind of a different law with this, and this, you know, municipal law, so, um, by looking for someone to help with some insight of what to expect within this job and everything, so, um, she had, and I'm not a judge fix or anything, but she had very little time for transition when she took the choice spot here and everything, so, uh, I asked her for some insight and maybe help looking for a different solicitor. I appreciate your time here and your efforts on the electric council being a legal spokesperson and I wish you well in the future, so.
And I'm gone on vacation for the next two weeks, but Chief Danny, you guys can still call me if you need me, but just let everyone know if I'm a little slow to respond, thanks.
Do you take people along with you? Just like put me in a suitcase or something?
Going in an RV, I think that.
That'll work.
Got a circus already in there, so.
I can drive.
There you go.
You may not want that. Best of luck to you in the future, so.
Thank you.
Department heads, um, Chief Dan.
Uh, first thing is looking at this kennel thing for the dogs, it looks like five dogs, they require kennel license, looks like up to five tags, so it's under nine, five, oh, one. Negative five oh four, looks like, so. So now, okay, so, alright, one, I just want to say thank you for the support of the council and the mayor, allowing me this opportunity to serve the village of Hicksville. I don't have really any other, the report on any department issues at this time, so, that's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Mike.
Who's up? Barrett?
I don't have anything.
Nothing?
Nope.
You sit down.
From the fire side, I don't have anything.
Nothing. Thank the Fire and EMS Department for all the services they did for the breakfast during the festival and stuff, and the runs y'all had during that time too, parade, I think, and then during the breakfast, so, and we had people step up and, uh, help while you guys were gone serving the community, so we appreciate that. Bruce?
Just a couple of things, um, five, ten is going in quarter, I'll change on Wednesday, so be prepared for that bill, it's going to be coming towards you. I was approached last week by somebody from out of town that once, uh, I used to actually work with her at Parkview and, uh, her daughter is going into a nursing program, she's going to be a senior at Eastside this year, and, uh, she was, uh, instead of her doing, uh, her internship at, uh, a nursing home, she asked if we would be available, and she would be doing right time from either nine to twelve or twelve to three, uh, every day, um, from pretty much August to, uh, August to December, um, I think this is a great opportunity to allow somebody to do right along, um, I have talked to the medical director and he's, he's okay with it, um, as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with it, she just has to, her and her mom both have to fill out the HIPAA form and the notice of, you know, that if anything happens, you know, that this is, you know, this is on her, you know, this is a, you know, being in the back of an ambulance is not the, sometimes the safest places to be, depending on who's driving, so, um, so I'm just alerting you guys to that fact, you know.
I would have a question on that, liability with that, I don't, we checked with our insurance company to see, yeah, I'm just saying, I don't, in all the years I've been here, I don't think we've had an intern or, I think it's a neat idea, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, uh, I, I don't, uh, I'm, again, you know, like I told her, I said, well, first of all, I got to run by council and then I got to run by the medical director.
Don't we already have a nurse that's riding with us sometimes? Is she?
One of the EMTs?
This is a high school student, she's not a nurse.
It's only EMTs in the truck right now.
Yeah, it's only, it's only us.
And our fire, fire person that you drive down, we're on.
Who's riding?
Who?
Ava.
No, so she, so, um, once she graduated, uh, once she graduated, uh, she hasn't signed up for any in a while, and she's actually looking, uh, to take a class, so I'm thinking that I'm going to try and do a, a basic class over here sometime coming up soon, with Michael and I, the other paramedic, we're both educators, we're instructors, so we can both do it. So Mike and I just have to coordinate schedules about doing that, so.
Another question, Bruce can answer, have you discussed with the mayor or anybody else of what we talked about on the phone the other night?
Uh, yeah, and, uh, um, that, what I had asked needs to happen.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's not, uh, it's not major, but you guys need to know, so.
Okay, well, we'll pull together a PFE meeting. So I.
Need to tell them officially about Drew. With your assistant.
I did.
You did the committee, but not council.
Oh, okay, sorry. So, um, uh, as of, uh, the last council notes, uh, I can't remember the date, um, I have made Drew work the assistant chief over there, so if I'm not available, um, he's with the amount of experience that he has, plus, uh, starting this fall, he's going for his paramedic as well, so, um.
As of May twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh, alright, thank you. Um, Abby has, is, uh, has not taken her test yet, but I presume it's going to be soon, she's not telling anybody, so, um, there's that. Uh, I have a name for you, Brianna Bauer Thacker, she is a sister, uh, she's related somehow to Jordan Wolfe, who is a current firefighter, she is already a basic EMT, she got her, she got her card, uh, May twenty-eighth, and, uh, she came to us, she had went to Williams County and Williams County said, well, we just hired ten, and, uh, she came to us and I said, well, I'll, I'll ask, so, um, I'll bring forward her name. Uh, she is looking for part-time, full-time, whatever we can give to her, right now she's not working, um, which, when we do have a PFE meeting, I kind of want to discuss, um, some, some personnel, I mean, not, not really personnel, but some hours that I'm looking at, you know, how it feel. So with that being said, uh, next Wednesday night, um, next Wednesday night, you are all invited, next door, um, Parkview, and we are doing a SIM lab down here on Thursday, next Thursday, uh, it'd be the twenty-sixth.
Not Wednesday.
So Thursday, we're doing a SIM lab. They are as, they are asking if you guys would want to come to and kind of get a preview of this SIM lab, uh, this will be a private preview, um, for you guys only, um, and the reason why that is, is because they ask that, uh, that elected officials not show up, because sometimes they can throw off the people that throw up the reason for the SIM, you know, sometimes, sometimes EMTs, you know, if they have an elected official looking at them, they may, they may like, oh.
What's, what's, what's a SIM?
Yeah, what is a SIM?
Alright, so it's a simulation lab, uh, so basically what we're, what we're going to do, and I, I'm not going to give you what the simulation is.
Yeah, they're going to listen.
But basically, basically what happens is we have a high fidelity mannequin that will be coming in.
Oh, they're going to bring their big black truck over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, well, it might not be the big black truck, it might be just an ambulance, but, um, each person will have to, it goes from nine AM till five PM, um, each person, each team, uh, has to respond in a proper way of per, or protocols and everything, so, um, and I had a conversation with our medical director on Saturday regarding, uh, regarding that and some other things, so I can give you an update at that time.
What time on Wednesday?
Uh, well, we could do it at six, if you guys are all available.
Wait, is that something, because this sounds like it's a special presentation.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys don't want to do it, if you guys don't want to do it, fine, I'll just send them a text or send them an email saying, hey, thanks, but they, they're not really interested, or, you know, you guys can, um, you know, and if there's just a couple I get that are thinking about it, stop by on Thursday, I don't, I don't care. If, if you've never seen this before, I would encourage you to take a look at it, we did it last fall, it's the same one, they came to our office and did it as part of our first day CPR stuff, uh, it's, it's really neat. So. And it's like real life, it can be like a real life scenario. So yes, we will have to, uh, we would have to verify what meds were given, how much were given, um, for Michael and I, uh, because we are paramedics, the state of Ohio requires us to either have a live innovation or a high fidelity mannequin innovation, uh, once per quarter, so that'll happen on next Thursday as well, so, um, you guys can see what goes into that, but other than that, um, that's all I have at this, at this moment.
It sounds like some of you guys want to plan on trying to attend.
I'll be on vacation, so I'm, you're always on my case. Yeah, well, we got Rachel, she's on vacation, please.
Tony?
I, I'm interested, but I also know what the SIM is, I, I can do part of SIMs on a daily basis, so.
Like I said, I would want to make it worth their while if they're going to bring a unit over and trucking people, I mean, if there's enough of us there to, to do the presentation after. I mean, if there's enough of us there to, to do the presentation after. Ron, Ken, Charlie? I'm in. I'd like to go see it, so.
I'm not sure. I've gotta look at my little green book.
My talk?
To let you know.
Yeah, just, just let me know. So if there's any other questions, that's, that's what I'm gonna do.
You need a motion for the Brianna Stacker to join the unit right now?
Yeah, and it's Bauer Thacker.
What? I had to, that one was way off. Bauer Thacker?
Yeah, it's Brianna Bauer Thacker.
Where she live at? I mean, she's not gonna be able to respond to.
She lives in Bryan.
Okay.
She lives in Bryan.
Only when she's on schedule.
Yeah. But the, but the nice thing is, is, nice thing, not nice thing, uh, is that right now she's not working, so the ability for her to pick up, obviously she, being brand new, she has to be right time. And that's, that's the sad thing, you know, but you gotta have that right time, so.
Do you still have people in your department that are doing right time with you?
Not, not currently, no. Uh, well, I take that back. Uh, Tim, Tim Coon is, um, Tim has, uh, uh, still needs some right time. I do have, uh, a few people that are attempting testing. I, I know, uh, two, two of them took the test, uh, their respective tests today. One was advanced, one was a basic, so, and I got one, uh, testing on Wednesday, I think, so.
I just wanna give them priority for right time.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's a, it's, it's very much, um, you know, that is, that is my top priority is getting them into the rotation. Unfortunately, you know, it's not, it's no different than anything else. Unfortunately, it's what you put into it and if, and I'm not gonna, I, I, I refuse to go hunting down people that don't wanna put their time, their own time in, you know. You wanna be a part of this department, you put your time in, so.
Uh, make a motion for Brianna Stacker as a part of the department.
Second that. I make a motion.
I'll second that.
A roll call.
Edgeland.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Thank you, Bruce. So, our chief fiscal officer report.
Uh, pretty much nothing except talking about the texts that are going on, which we'll know for a hundred percent June thirtieth. Um, the fund status is still holding steady. We have spent a little more than we brought in, but not much. I have the mayor's court and the police department going to the court. And I also put in, um, I always get these notices from the attorney general and this one has to do with why we don't give out any information. I mean, it's hard in a small village because everybody knows everybody, but phone numbers and addresses and things like that because of things that happened to elected officials. Now, the world's so crazy.
What, what are they asking? Why we don't?
Give out any personal information with elected officials as well as the police department.
Well, one, there's a.
To let people know where you live and things like that.
Well, one, there's a law for cows.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know about elected officials.
Yeah, he's, he's defending it.
Yeah, okay.
Any question for Cheryl?
One quick one for, since for finance for later on. Are you guys tracking all the costs separately for the splash pads when we do budgets? For electrical use, for the paper, paper tunnel, all that kind of stuff?
We have so far, yeah. Got it so.
Wonder.
Yeah. Just a little second.
No questions for Cheryl?
Did?
Um, we just got a couple of quick announcements and then I'll have to ask for executive. Um, I hope everyone here, all the fathers out there, had a happy Father's Day. I wanted to thank the hundred and fiftieth committee, sponsors, businesses, organizations, and Hicksville for making this year's hundred and fiftieth celebration very special. Um, it was amazing. I got a lot of good comments. Uh, the committee met again and we're planning on doing it again next year. It's gonna be the hundred and fiftieth, right? We're trying to think up a new name, but uh, it was a chance to bring the town together. A lot of people did a lot of fun things, so uh, we're gonna work on it again next year, so thank you for that. Um, and we don't have council again until July seventh, so I hope everyone out there has a happy and blessed and happy Fourth of July, so. And we have Erica here tonight, um, so I talked to Erica a little bit earlier about, um.
I'd like to call for executive session for item number two, buying and selling property.
And I'd like to throw a personnel in there also.
Item number two.
That's on the list, that's, that's the.
Number two combo.
If the number one is.
Have a motion for that.
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Did, and you?
Well, yeah, whatever you wanna do.
Just jot something down.
Beverly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yeah.
Bassett.
Yes.
Edgeland.
Yes.
Okay, we'll start with Erica first for executive.